It is 5:00 PM, Monday, July 26. It is our caucus meeting. Would all of you rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the county caucus meeting to order. Looking around the room, we have the majority of individuals from council in chambers. We do have Mr. Somerville, who is out of town online, Mr. Dawson, who is online, and council member Fluelling is also online. At this point in time, the other council members are in chambers, and I have not seen or heard the status of Councilmember Hervison as yet. So we do have ten members of council present so we can conduct the business. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would like a member of council to offer the motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move approval of the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman has made the motion for approval of the agenda. May I have a second, please?
To move, sir.
Mr. McCallan.
Sorry, I was late.
I was going to say, Mr. Larry. Mr. McCallan has made the second. It has been duly motioned and second. Is there any objections to approving the agenda as stated? Seeing no objections, the agenda is approved. Next item is to review the council meeting agenda. Okay. Is there any comments members of council wish to make on the agenda? It is a short agenda. I believe we will be able to get through this quickly. The consent agenda comes from one item from the finance committee and five items from public facilities. Any questions regarding those? Seeing none, we will have proclamation read because Mr. Somerville is not in person to read that proclamation. The proclamation is going to be read by Councilmember Glover. We will have approval of the minutes and liaison reports. So it looks pretty rudimentary this evening. This is the time of the year where members of staff are on vacation, so the agendas are not as extensive as they normally are. Any other concerns about the agenda items? Everybody understands them? In the administrators' report, you're going to take care of the one item, which is item number thirteen on the agenda? Okay, all right. We'll explain exactly why that is on the agenda and how we're going to take care of that particular item. Okay. Is there any council member discussion? Okay, I'm getting...
Mr. Rodman.
I have no idea who that is. Go ahead, Mr. Rodman.
Two items, Mr. Chairman. At our last public facilities committee meeting, we presented the... highlighted that we will be sending out the study that was done to look at our facilities' needs over the upcoming years, and that has been sent out to the members. We said at that point that we would probably adjourn a meeting or convene a meeting in the near future to go through that in detail. And my thinking is that we might look to next Monday or the following Monday, and I guess I would just ask if anybody has a problem with either of those. Perhaps we could zero in on something that meets everybody's objectives. Secondly, within that, I would envision that we might have a discussion, and also if particular members want to go into a lot of depth on the particular report, particularly things, that we could set it up that they could do that individually. So I just throw that out, and if you would, let us know if either the second or the ninth is inconvenient for any of the people that want to come to review the... review that report. Secondly, back when we appointed Eric as the interim, we put in place a weekly report and a listing of the expenditures that he had done. I believe our intent at that time was to do that because he was interim. It seems to me now that he is appointed full-time that we could eliminate that report, but he would use judgment on communicating with us on individual items. So that would be my suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are we good?
Stu, on that suggestion of August 2nd...
Yep.
I think we're moving the committee meetings that day because of the meeting that's ending the next day at Hilton Head.
Oh, okay.
So that the second may not...
Okay.
There already may be a conflict at that day.
Good, well, then let's just... Why don't you let us know if the ninth is a problem for anybody who might fit better? I would envision that we'd probably have an hour's discussion and nothing really else on the agenda.
So we'll have, if we do it the ninth, we'll have two committee meetings in that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we can accommodate... Yeah, I think we can accommodate that. For the members of the public, what we're talking about is starting this Friday, the SCAC conference will be on Hilton Head Island. Several members of county council will be attending for classes and other programs that are going on. It does not end until Tuesday, therefore there is a conflict with our Monday meetings, so that's why we are going to postpone them till the following week. Okay. Any other discussion that needs to come before...
Joe, just one more thing, and staff will just let me know that on the ninth, Stu, we might have to look at that again because there's three other meetings already on that on that date. That could be good or could be bad, but I think something else just to look at.
Okay, well, so let's look at both the ninth and maybe the sixteenth, and just let staff know if you would, let Tiffany know if either of those is inconvenient. We'll try to pick one that meets most people's needs. And I do think there's probably going to be two or three people that want to sit down and go through it in depth, so I think having two bites of the apple, one as a group and one individually, would hopefully get us through that.
Okay, what three meetings do you...
Go ahead.
Community Natural Resources.
Oh, yes, yes, that's correct.
We could do... We could potentially do the second, but it just needs to be later in the day because I know myself I'm going to be involved in the county administrator, county manager's business meeting that's happening at from like 1:30 to 3:30, so it would push me, but if we started it, you know, you know, around 4:30 or 5:00, then we could do it on the... we could do it on the second. If we do it on the night, then you're going to have the executive committee, natural resources, and community services meeting that same day, so...
Okay. Now, I know that Councilmember Somerville and I do have obligations as...
On that Monday.
On that Monday, we would have to sit down and find out if we would be able to even have our executive committee meeting on that day. So we'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, we could do it the second as long as...
The schedule is being finalized or has been finalized. I just haven't looked at it in a couple days, but as chair of council, I know there are certain things I am obligated to do as, you know, hosting, you know, being the county host and having to say some things and do some things, and I know that Paul is involved in some committee meetings that may be on that day as well.
Yeah, but let's not try to do it on the second. There'd be too much stuff packed up.
Mr. Chairman, when is the county council meeting in August?
I thought it was the ninth.
No, the county council meeting in August is on the 23rd. We only have one meeting in July and one meeting in August.
Where will it be held?
Here.
It says originally it was Hilton Head, so we're not doing that?
I don't know if we're ready to begin the rotational schedule.
Okay.
We will be in August. We were ready to do it.
Okay.
Our plan is to hold the first meeting here each month, and then the second meeting will be somewhere else, so...
Well, there's only one meeting in August.
Right, if there's only one meeting, then it will be here.
Okay. So we'll hold it here and do the rotational schedule in September. And what we're trying to do is to go to a variety of locations rather than just have the three rotational ones that we do, one in Bluffton, one in Hilton Head, and here. When we go to Hilton Head, we're going to take a look at different venues on Hilton Head that may be more accommodating. Same thing with Bluffton, and same thing here, that we may want to go to different places within Beaufort County itself to, you know, garner as many in... as much input as we can from the citizens where they actually live. Okay? All right. Anything else for the good of the order? If there is no other items to come before us, we will close down the caucus meeting and resume at 6 o'clock for the county council meeting. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Seeing none, we are adjourned.
The Beaufort County Council to order it is Monday, July 26th. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation, which will be done by Councilmember McKellen?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dear wise and loving God, we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for life itself and for the measure of health given us to fulfill our duties. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing serious responsibilities. I ask that we as a body promote peace, order, and justice, and that you graciously grant this assembled body the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, to have a sense of the true needs of our citizens, to have a keen thirst for justice, to understand and to clearly see what is good, fitting, and appropriate, to have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and to have personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. Finally, please help us to ensure that our deliberations here tonight benefit those who live and work in our extended community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This is a hybrid meeting, which means that we are not only online but in person. Seven members of county council are in person this evening. Three members of county council, Mr. Somerville, Mr. Dawson, and Mr. Fluelling are online. You can see their lovely faces on the screen. And one member, Mr. Hervashon, is absent, so we do have a quorum to conduct the business of county council. I would ask that a member of council offer the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman did the motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKellen did the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next is the approval of the minutes of April 26th, May 10th, May 24th, and June 14th of 2021. May have a motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, Ms. Howard makes the motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Fluelling makes the second. Is there any discussion, changes, questions, or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objections, and I see no objections. Next on our list is our administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm going to change things up a little bit tonight and do the first part of my report first tonight because there's some negative things with it, and I do not want that to detract from the folks that I want to introduce this evening. So the first thing is item 13 on your agenda. We have requested a deferral of that item and a referral back to the executive committee. We are still working through the ordinance and situation with Beaufort Memorial Hospital regarding the board, and we would like for you all to put our action on that night to give us, tonight, to give us an opportunity in order to continue those discussions with Mr. Baxley and his team and take it back to the executive committee. You all to make a favorable recommendation. Hopefully by that time, we will have all the issues resolved. The lawsuit has been dismissed by the hospital. I sent that out to you all several days ago. You may not have seen it, but so we are making progress in that in a positive way, and I appreciate Mr. Baxley's work on that and his communication with me over the last several weeks. So that's the first item on the report tonight. The second item is we have already had two appeals to our impact fee ordinance regarding the school impact fee. We do not think that those appeals have a strong case because we have development agreements with both of these entities that have filed these appeals. One is Mail and Bluff. As you all recall, as part of the settlement with Mail and Bluff, we amended the existing development agreement to give them a favorable, very favorable development agreement in exchange for them paying the school impact fee whenever it was adopted. Polte Homes, that is a party to that development agreement, has filed a protest and also an administrative appeal, and it does appear that we might be heading toward litigating that matter. I will read you the development agreement language regarding this item just so you can understand that. It says the owner will pay an impact fee of $1,500 for each residential unit at the time of obtaining the building permit. This fee would terminate if the county were to adopt a school impact fee during the term at which time the owner would pay the amount of the countywide fee in lieu of the amount of the fee specified herein. So not only do we have a potential appeal, but we may also have what constitutes a breach of the development agreement. We're working through that with outside legal counsel at this particular point in time. The second appeal also has a development agreement and has been filed by the first person who bought property at a very well-known development that you all know as Pepper Hall, and that development agreement language said, "It is also specifically acknowledged by the parties that this agreement shall not prohibit the application to the property and the Okati River Park of any current or future building, housing, electrical, plumbing, gas, swimming pool, or other standard codes of general application throughout the county of any tax or fee, including school impact fees of general application throughout the county." It is further specifically acknowledged that nothing in this agreement shall be deemed to exempt the property and the Okati River Park from fees, taxes that may be imposed by governmental entities other than the county. In addition to that, because we received notice today by the attorney who is filing these appeals that we might be headed toward litigation on that one, I just want the council to know that Section K of that same development agreement says, "In the event of any illegal action instituted by a third party or other governmental entity or official challenging the validity of any provision in this agreement, the parties hereby agree to cooperate in defending such action, provided however that each party shall obtain the right to pursue its own independent legal defense." So basically what that means is that if we were to be challenged on the school impact fee, I do believe that Mr. Graves would have to join us in the defense of the development agreement in accordance with the language of that, of that section then. So.
I don't need to do the announcement on Hilton Head in August. Is that what you're, you all told me earlier?
Okay, thank you very much. One additional thing that has caused some confusion for council that I will go ahead and take care of again, or may have caused confusion for council that I apologize if it did, is if you recall back during the budget, we proposed that we would separate out a couple of positions with the organizational chart. One of those was the ACA for Finance from being the CFO, so we are in the process currently of filling the ACA Finance position and also a Chief Financial Officer position. But in addition to that, we separated and made smaller the Community Services ACA, and we split those into two groups. One would handle the development, recreation, library side of the equation, and then the other position would handle human services, drug and alcohol, DSN, AlCOG, and those functions. And I have promoted Audra Antanasi, who is here this evening. Did I do your name? It's hard for me to pronounce that Italian last name with my southern accent.
Oh, come on.
She has, she has been promoted to take over the ACA duties for alcohol and drug human services, DSN, AlCOG, and voter's registration. So you will be seeing more of her and working with her, and just so you're aware of that. And we will have the other announcements to you all whenever we fill those other positions. So having done that, those items, we will now come to the positive part of the, or the more positive part of the presentation where I get to introduce employees, which is always a highlight of my council meetings with you all. Our first employee tonight is an employee at our detention center, is Corporal Janitha White. She is a classification supervisor. She's been with us over 15 years. Her responsibilities include investigation of inmate disciplinary violations, time computation, assessment of inmate custody level, and housing placement of inmates. I toured the detention center some time ago, and I was amazed to learn that putting these folks together whenever they come in is quite an art because you have to look at their background and try to figure out that there's no relations or no tie to the other, other inmates and things like that that could cause an issue. So apparently she was involved in that, and it's fairly complicated and a very complex task that they go through there. On any given day, you may see her washing dishes, serving meals to the inmate population, relieving officers for breaks, or being one of the first persons to respond to an emergency code within the facility. Ms. White is described by many as a sweet, loving soul who is always one to help. Ms. White has effortlessly embodied the term lead by example. One of the things that's unique about her, she has given herself selflessly for over 15 years, exceeding job standards on many levels. We're truly grateful for her service and honored to have her as a part of the team. And the person that wrote this for me says she is undoubtedly worthy of the recognition. So thank you, Ms. White, for your service to us, and I do appreciate all that you do over there in a very tense and stressful environment. Let's give her a round. Our second employee this evening is also an officer at the detention center, Officer Tisha White Watson. She is Director of Immate Programs and Services. She's been with us eight years. Officer White Watson has committed 25 years to the field of corrections. Eight of them served at Beaufort County Detention Center. She started her employment on June of 2013 as a correctional officer. She quickly moved up the ranks and worked as an intake corporal in booking for three years. Later, she applied and moved into her current position as Director of Immate Programs and Services. In this position, she is the Coordinator for the Prison Rate Elimination Act, the GED Program Manager, and represents Beaufort County Detention on the Board of COSA, just to name a few things that she does. Another duty that she does as Director of Immate Programs and Services is to authenticate and deliver death notifications to inmates about their family members. We hope she does not have to do that very often, but to build community relations, she has met with local funeral homes and the coroner's office on behalf of the detention center. Something unique about her, she has implemented new programs such as yoga and fine arts. There, she reached out and found volunteers to instruct these programs, and it's been a great success there at the detention center. And then also the success rate of the inmate GED program under her tutelage has yielded 20 inmates receiving their graduate equivalency degrees. Currently, this is the highest rate in Beaufort County for the GED program, so let's commend her for the job that she does. Our third employee, and photo for those, for this individual, is Jason Lightsey. He's the mosquito control supervisor. Been with us 19 years. He coordinates the activities of seven technicians during the first and third shifts, including GPS tracking of most operations and safety training. There, there he is. And Jason was born and raised in Beaufort County, so he's a native. His hobbies include hunting, fishing, drag racing, and enjoying the low country outdoors with family and friends. So he and I have quite a bit in common because I too enjoy the low country outdoors, so it's, it's great. So let's give him a round of applause. This is Ms. Marcy Taylor with us from our Beaufort County EMS department. She's an administrative assistant with them. She has been with us 21 years. She was hired in July of 2000, so you're, you're right on an anniversary, aren't you?
I sure am tonight.
That's awesome.
That's great.
She started out as an administrative assistant with EMS. As her responsibility to Beaufort County EMS involved, she took on a multitude of collateral duties involving the financial task of payroll, accounts receivables, and accounts payables. She also fulfilled the need for a variety of additional roles to include workers' compensation processing, HIPAA management and training, customer service to the public, and any other needs that routinely landed on her desk. She is often referred to by those in her department as the glue that holds this place together. I see that's how I phrase it. I see, really does, yes. She received her Bachelor's of Business Administration magna cum laude from Baker College. She spends as She spends as much time as possible with her family and grandchildren, and she enjoys her collection of pets, hiking, and camping. Anyway, let's give her a round of applause.
It's been an honor to be a part of such a wonderful organization for all of these things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can probably tell where he works just by his uniform. This is Matthew Price. He's an emergency medical technician. He's been with us for two years. Matt performs all his responsibilities as an EMT with a good attitude every day. Responsibilities include responding to emergency calls for assistance at the scene of a fire, accident, illness, or a life-threatening situation which require emergency medical services. He maintains radio contact with emergency dispatch staff and hospitals, drives and operates emergency vehicles to include ambulances, and operates emergency medical equipment. He also assists other emergency services agencies as needed and works faithfully with fire, police, and dispatch personnel. Matt has lived in the Low Country for the past nine years, five of those in Beaufort County. Before joining Beaufort County Emergency Medical Services in the fall of 2019, he worked at Beaufort Memorial Hospital in the emergency room as a technician. He began his employment with EMS in June 2019. However, due to some sneaky oyster shells and several surgeries, he didn't start until the fall of 2019. I do want to hear that story one day. After going through EMS orientation and interim program, Price found his Army National Guard Unit being deployed to Naval Station Guantanamo Bay, Cuba in support of Operation Enduring Freedom from February 2020 till March 2021. While deployed, First Lieutenant Price served as an Assistant Operations Officer of the U.S. Strategic Detention Facility, receiving his undergraduate from the Citadel in Criminal Justice with emphasis in Homeland Security and Intelligence. Price plans to begin his educational prerequisites to further his medical training and aspiration of becoming a physician's assistant. Matt serves his community and country with pride and honor. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you, Beaufort County EMS, Beaufort County. I know being away, it's something people think like is easy, but you know, it makes it a lot easier when you have a good, you know, you don't have to worry about your job, you don't have to worry about anything like that back home, because I've seen some horror stories. So not having to worry about it and having you guys take care of it was, makes it way easier to do my job.
Thank you for your service here and to our country, and let's give him a round of applause. I'm asking his family and friends to stand up as well. And then finally, this evening, one more picture, one more individual. Pagan Michaelmore. She is an animal care technician. She's been with us five years. She, her day-to-day duties include animal services intake, outtake, administering animal medication, cleaning, and basic care of felines, as well as nursing and caring for all newborn kittens within the shelter. That would have to be a very fun job, I would imagine, very enjoyable. Due to Beaufort County's animal services success is, due to this, Beaufort County's animal services success is a direct result of Pagan's long hours, passion, and efforts. Pagan has been the true definition of team as it pertains to our public-private partnership with Hilton Head Humane Association. She has gone out of her way to ensure the success and completion of the important work that needs to be accomplished daily to save the animals. She is a true professional and an all-around good person. Something unique about Pagan is that she was born and raised in Beaufort and prefers to spend her time helping at the animal shelter. But when she isn't working at animal shelter, she is something that's becoming a lost art. She sews things. So anyway, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
That was wonderful. Thank you very much. Item number seven is our Gullah Geechee National Appreciation Week proclamation. And I'm going to ask Councilman Lover to come forward to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Queen Quet to step up here to the podium with me. And on behalf of Mr. Somerville, who cannot be here in person, I am in charge to do this task on his behalf. So Paul, I hope I do you well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. This is the proclamation. Whereas Africans began arriving on the Sea Islands in the 1500s, and whereas the population of these Africans increased as travel enslavement grew in the 1600s, and whereas these Africans began to engage with, and in some instance, created families with indigenous Americans in the region. And whereas the descendants of this group are called Gullah Geechee, and whereas this group of self-sufficient people came together in 1999 throughout the Sea Islands, the Low Country, the Carolinas, Georgia, and Florida, to stand on their human rights to self-determination, and whereas this group took one year to elect their own leader. And whereas this elected and installed St. Helena Island native whose family roots were stemmed from Palawanah and Otto Islands, Queen Quet, Chieftain of the Gullah Geechee Nation, and whereas Queen Quet has served as the official headpondebody and spokesperson for the Gullah Geechees since July the 2nd, 2000, and whereas the 21st anniversary of the Gullah Geechee Nation is being celebrated under the theme "Celebrating Gullah Geechee Land and Living Legacy." And whereas we support the continuation of the Gullah Geechee comfort heritage and sustainability of the Gullah Geechee Nation, now therefore be resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim this week of July 31st, August through August the 8th, 2021, as Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week, and call upon all our citizens to celebrate with the citizens of the Gullah Geechee Nation under the theme "Celebrating Gullah Geechee Land and Living Legacy." The Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week is signed and dated the 26th day of July by our Chairman Joseph Pasteman, Jr.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it.
And you will be held.
I have to pour it in. Yes. Good evening, how the children, how I wanna do? Y'all ain't be yet to be anything like that, Mike ain't a what, tall tall? Oh, I just can't carry it like a this shit. Y'all come here, all I wanna chillin', come here, say, hey, man. Okay, that way though. So I'll speak like this for y'all, come here, so, but that works. So yes, I'm so glad if I had you one more again, and it's a blessing to have this presented tonight, this week, that is the Olympics week. Because what Councilman Glover doesn't didn't know is that as I watched the Olympic ceremony the other night, I remembered the academic Olympics, when I won, yeah, woo, when I won gold medals, and he was the person that adorned me with the gold medals. And so I had no idea that I'd walk in here tonight and he would adorn me with this. I was waiting for my medal next to go around my neck, too. But I was so glad if I had this show this evening and for all the family in the Gullah Geechee Nation, especially y'all in Beaufort County. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Cultural Protection Overlay District Committee, the CP Committee for St. Helena Island, this is an honor and it's timely, because we have received an EPA Building Blocks Grant, which adorned the St. Helena Gullah Geechee living landscape that we are working on to build resiliency for my home island, St. Helena Island, and it ties directly into the Military Installation Resiliency Review that I'm working on, and I'm also now on the team with the Pew Charitable Trust to also protect our salt marshes for the southeast. And there's a number of other initiatives. So all of these things tied to the United Nations work for 30x30 planning, and also the UN Sustainable Development Goals that I've been pushing and working on for years. And so it's a blessing to finally have all this celebrated right show, where we the deal from and thing like that, in beautiful Beaufort by the sea. And we want to keep it that way for generations to come. So this Saturday, for the first time in history and in our story, we will launch the week here on St. Helena Island. Saturday at the corner, as some of us call it, at the Martin Luther King Memorial Park on St. Helena Island, I can't miss me and thing like that. If you know how to get to Penn Center, you can't miss me. We gonna date it right there on the corner. And so that will be noon to 3:00 Saturday. They're gonna be good food. Bring your dancing shoes. Bring a positive attitude. We gonna have a good time, all right, on Saturday, and the week will continue. And the following Friday, we'll actually be here in Beaufort. We'll be at the Legacy Gallery at 5:00 to 7:00 for the first Fridays over on Bay Street. So come on over, get some nice artwork, have a good evening, and all of that. So if anyone wants to know all the other events in between, just follow gullageechenation.com, Gullah Geechee Nation on Facebook, or @gullageechee on Twitter. And by the way, Gullah, G-U-L-L-A-H, Geechee is G-E-E-C-H-E-E-N, and no R in Geechee for the week, okay? So we want to make sure that all the children can come, join, we celebrate who we be, and we thank God that we be Gullah Geechee Anointed People. Thank y'all. We gonna keep on fighting the whole land and protect especially our sacred areas and burial grounds through all this resiliency plan. So thank y'all for joining us and taking that stand. Appreciate you. See you Saturday.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our citizen comments. We do have one individual in our midst who has signed up, Mr. Floyd Shannon, who would like to speak to us about road maintenance. Mr. Shannon, would you please come to the podium?
Thank you for having me speak again. Just what I'm talking about. Anyway, I don't see the gentleman here that was gonna have someone calling at the last meeting. They never called. Anyway, an update on what's a road. Wednesday will mark 14 weeks since the road was graded. That's three and a half months. If you look, you have a picture before you. Anyone know what the result is gonna be when they do grade the road? Not familiar with roads? They gonna grade all that grass back up in the road, and it's gonna be a mess. But I'll take that. Yeah, I only, I've spoken, this will be my third time. I've cogitated and thought about the situation. I only see two solutions. One, fix the problem in the current system. Now, there's no alternative to that. Eliminate the whole department and outsource to an individual contractor. I have over 30 years' experience in industrial maintenance as a manager. Managers, they identify and solve problems. You don't last 30 years if you don't have some success. I ain't saying I'm agreeing, but I lasted 30 years. Now, if you can't, if you can't identify a problem, you certainly cannot fix it. So I'm here tonight to make a no lose offer to the council. I will work as an independent consultant for $1 a month, $1 a month, plus a company vehicle. And if the end of two months, I haven't identified a problem, and I didn't say fix the problem, because that's not, not going there, identifies a problem, I'll give you your $2 back. There's only one condition, is, and that is, that I have access to all the employees, to talk to all the employees, from meals to size, to the motor grayers. Because if I don't have that access, I can't tell you the picture of who's doing what, should be doing what, or whatever. Now, you want to cogitate and discuss this among yourselves later? I refuse to offer it now.
Mr. Shannon.
You didn't refuse, so I guess you go to discuss it.
Well, the purpose of this is to hear what you have to say. This isn't a discussion. So we've heard what you said, and it'll be considered.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Before you leave, sir, what was the road that you're?
The name of the road.
The road you recommended. W-I-P-S-E-L. Out of Dale.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other person wishing to address, County Council? Whether there is no one online, okay, then we will close the comment period. We're at committee reports, liaison and committee reports. Ms. Howard, you'll go first.
Thank you. I have a brief one. The TCL Board met July 20th. They announced that they're gonna have two computer science certification classes offered that's in computer security this fall, and they also have received state funding for the Culinary Institute and their health sciences buildings renovation on it, and they plan to start a new pharmacy tech program.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. McCollum.
God, who was he?
No, I was actually pointing to Mr. Lawson. He was gonna go next, but you may go next.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. The county administrator has mentioned that there have been some changes in Community Services and Public Safety Committee. Chuck Atkinson and Phil Foot, both Assistant County Administrators, have been assigned as staff to the committee for the past two and a half years, and I wanted to take just a moment to congratulate them and thank them for the service that they provided to the committee since my assignment as chairman, which began in 2019. So thank you, Chuck, and thank you, Phil. Fortunately, you're both still on the committee, and we will expect you to continue that stellar service in the future. I'd also like to welcome Audra Antonacci to the committee in the position of Assistant County Administrator, who will be joining Chuck and Phil with responsibility for certain areas of community services. So Audra, welcome to the committee, and we're very happy that you're going to be there. You're going to have to tolerate working with Chuck and Phil, but we've all managed to do that, and we've suffered through it. So welcome to the club. Thank you very much.
Now, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Lawson.
Yes, coming out of the Finance Committee, we do have one thing on the consent agenda, and that was for a permitted one-year contract extension for auditing services from Malden and Jenkins. Again, so that's up for approval. And then our next Finance Committee meeting will be August 16th at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. And from Public Facilities, Mr. Rodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had Public Facilities Committee a week ago, and we have several items on the consent agenda coming forward. One is a work authorization for $531,000 for our outside consultants to continue the development of the airport. A portion of this is a overlay of the existing airport runway to strengthen it, as some of the aircraft are of higher weights at this point in time. That particular one is paid 100% by the FAA. We have a renewal of the security firm that we use at the airport. We also have a contract for the purchase of fuel. It's a Campbell Oil Company. They're a new provider to us for $375,000. Actually, in reality, this is the authorization to buy the fuel, which we then sell at a which we then sell at a profit which flows into the enterprise fund. We have a award for $237,000 for landscape management services on some of the highways around the county. And lastly, we have a intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Beaufort on a road that's commonly shared at the, at the airport in the northern part of the county. And all of those that I mentioned were unanimously approved by the Finance Committee. Just two or three other items that are kind of bubbling up, just so you're kind of aware as we talk about these. The airport at Hilton Head has experienced extremely significant growth. The, the staff has done a wonderful job of working with the airlines and TSA to work through the problems. So airports all over the country are very crowded, but they're handling the problems and making sure that nobody misses a, misses a flight. We also, they're nearing the completion of the design for the new airport. A portion of that is funded by the FAA, and the staff is working through a recommendation on how to do the balance of the funding. And what I've seen so far is pretty creative, and I think we'll be successful in, in working through that. Comment on two of the road projects. As many of you may realize, the U.S., South Carolina 170 and the section between 278 and 462 is becoming way overburdened, and there's an awful lot of development that's taking place along there. The county is proceeding with the design of the, of the first level of fix, but we're hoping that the conversations in the near future that will elevate that particular section to our number one priority in the, in the county. So stay tuned on, on that one. And lastly, the public hearings were last week on the 278 corridor. And just a comment about that, because sometimes it gets a little bit lost in the fact that it sounds like this is one project that's very controversial. In reality, you could think of it as a big project, which has the bridges and the section across what's called Jenkins Island. DOT has done a good job of designing all of that, and I don't think there's much controversy about that particular section. The, there's a short section that when you first come on Hilton Head on the main line, known as Stony, and it's a, it's a very thorny problem, given that you're trying to force a lot of traffic through a, through a short, narrow funnel, if you will. And, and I think it's gonna lend itself to maybe a little bit more look see. But the first big piece, hopefully DOT will step out smartly and move forward with that quickly. So-
Mr. Chairman, that's kind of a, just an overview from Public Facilities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're at the approval of the consent agenda, so I'm gonna ask a member of council to make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Some of-
Mr. Lawson makes the motion, seconded. And Mr. Somerville makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? The consent agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Thank you very much. Item number 11 is a third reading of an ordinance for text amendments to the Community Development Code for the update of definitions, regulations, and procedures for sign and sign permits. May I have a motion for that agenda item?
May I make a motion?
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. McCollum makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? I see no discussion. Therefore, this will be approved without objection, and I do not see any objections. Item number 11 is now approved. Item number 12 is a third reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving certain intergovernmental agreements by and between Beaufort County and the city of Beaufort, South Carolina, approving certain intergovernmental agreements by and between Beaufort County and the town of Port Royal, South Carolina, amending prior ordinances regarding multi-county industrial parks and addressing other matters related thereto for projects burger, garden, glass, and stone. May I have a motion for that agenda item, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flouelling makes the motion, and Mr. Glover makes the second. Is there any member of the public, either in person or online, who wishes to make a comment regarding this agenda item? There are no comments, therefore we will close the public hearing portion. Is there any comments or statements to be made by any member of council? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Therefore, item number 12 is approved. Item number 13 is the consideration of deferral of first reading of an ordinance proposing amendments to the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, Article 2, Sections 46.26 through 46.33. May I have a motion for that, please?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we defer this first reading until our meeting in August.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Flouelling makes the second. Is there any discussion?
If it's, if it's important to the council, we need, because the legal council of you all will be out of town in August on vacation, if it's gonna be in the motion, we need that amended to the September 7th Executive Committee.
Excellent.
I don't think it dates necessarily.
That's what I meant to say.
That's what I thought I could-
The way I understood it, sir.
And Mr. Flouelling heard that quite clearly.
The way I understood it as well, Stu.
Motioned and seconded, that we will move this to the September meeting of the Executive Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objections, and I see no objections. Yes. Why, was there a problem?
No.
What's your name?
Yeah.
Okay, we're at ours. Just some sidebar here. We're at our second citizens comments. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to make a comment? Joe, you're very quiet back there.
Wouldn't it surprise you if I got up?
Yes, it would. Anybody online? Seeing none, guess what? We are now adjourned. 6:44.
Don't hold the record.